Okay, we're gonna start the regular Perry-Carnegie Library Board meeting. And roll call please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Okay, declare court. And tonight we have opening for prayer with this Reverend Martin Foster from the First Christian Church.
Let's bring him up. Lord. Quiet our spirit. Let us know your presence. Give us wisdom. And give us the courage for our convictions. That we may choose wisely. And serve diligently. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Martin. Well, item number one is our consent agenda. Is there any items wishing to be removed from our consent agenda? You've got a first and a second. Vote please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is comments from those assembled. Any comments from anyone assembled? Seeing none, item number five is a presentation or orderly oral quarterly report from our librarian. Ms. Pamela, let her come at this time.
Thank you. I will keep it short and sweet. I understand there's game tonight. So I'm very happy to be here. I enjoy working at your beautiful library. You have a wonderful staff. I have never seen a more beautiful library in my life, and the community is incredibly supportive. So thank you. I began work October 15th, and our main focus is customer service. We're really working hard on sharpening our skills. And we've had one in service, and we have a training this month also in Stillwater. One thing I am doing very heavily is reading the collection. In a lot of places, there's not even room for one more book to fit on the shelf. And actually, books accumulate other places because there's not room for one more book to fit on the shelf. So I'm using usage statistics. And whether how outdated the book is, whether or not the book's current. I'm using a lot of different criteria, and we are reading heavily the collection. Our goal is face-out shelving, and whenever we do that, our circulation will increase because everyone will be able to find all the wonderful new books. The Friends of the Library had a book sale in October and raised over $300. We also did our Haunted Halloween at the library, and over 600 people came through the door. In November, I had the privilege of meeting the Progress Club, and those ladies are wonderful. In December, the library was beautifully decorated by the staff, by Ms. Luthy and all the others. And it's just gorgeous. And the Parks Department decorated the outside. I walked up and saw what they had done, and I was just tickled pink. So thank you, Parks Department. The Perry Daily Journal continues to promote the library. Thank you, Gloria. We had our annual open house, and it was fun. We had a lot of good food. It was like old home week. I got to meet new people, and it was like a family reunion for people who already knew each other. Linda Branson and Lori Sinclair had a children's tea December 14th, and there were lots of giggles. So I think the girls had a good time. Linda Branson and I took advantage of a special off-sale by Scholastic, and we went down and saved you lots of money. The sale was 50 to 80 percent off, and we got some wonderful items. I sometimes have to do these things for the library. I had to go to the Progress Club Christmas party. Oh, such good food, such fun ladies. And they gave us $3,000 to pay for our eBooks for the entire year. So a big thank you to the Progress Club. Hugh Merrill worked with OneNet to upgrade our T1 line to a 15-megabit line. This is good because our Internet's faster, but it also was good for the library because our circulation system is faster. We had a food-for-fine month, food-for-fine three weeks, actually. We collected 120 cans of food. The food was given to the First Baptist Church, and we have a box in waiting for the commission. I don't know. We're just working hard. We appreciate you all. We appreciate the people that come to the library. And if you haven't been back in a while, come in and see us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for her? We'll move on to item number six, which is the retroactive approval of new hours of operation at the Perry-Carnegie Library. They're recommending extending the hours on Monday from 6:00 PM until 7:00, and closing the library on Friday at 5:00 instead of 6:00. As Mondays are the busiest day of the week, and the library will permit additional time for commuting patrons and schoolchildren. So, any questions about that?
Move to approve.
Second. Vote please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
All right, moving on to item number seven. Declare certain books and publications and material surplus, and no longer necessary for your municipal purpose, and direct the city manager to make appropriate sell or disposition. Any questions?
Motion to declare the surplus.
Second.
Just get a first and a second. Vote please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And item eight is to adjourn. Second. Vote please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We will, 6:22.
6:22?
We'll call order our regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. First item is course to consent agenda. Anyone have any?
Roll call.
Roll call again. Roll call, Dixie.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Do I need to have a prayer on that, too?
No.
Okay.
Well.
Don't worry, we're praying.
Item one, consent agenda. We only have one item on consent agenda. What is your place?
Move to approve. Second.
Vote please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Comments from those assembled? Anyone in the audience or this panel needing any comments or questions? Proformations, commendations, reports, or inquiries in this council? Seeing none, next item of business, new business, there's not any that I know of unless someone was bringing them. Seeing none, next item of business is?
Move to adjourn.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
That's two minutes, 6:24. We're on with the regular agenda, our meeting of the Perry Council. And we'll take our items under consideration after. We have a roll call. Dixie.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Item number one is a consent agenda. We have four items on there. Is there any that someone would like to have removed?
Move to approve. Second.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
I'm sorry.
I'm not here.
She said she was here, okay?
Item four of our agenda, comments from those assembled. Anyone in the audience have any comments they'd like to make? It may not appear on the agenda. Comments from those assembled. Seeing no one wishing to do that, let's go to item five. Proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries from the government body. Anyone have any inquiries or comments?
I've got a question about the special election as a date due. But we're gonna have that on the agenda for the evening.
Be next week.
The next meeting.
Next meeting.
April 1st will be the election.
Election, okay.
Yes. We prepared that resolution today, and we have sent it to the election board secretary. She made a little, she made a little comment, and we're adding that. It'll be on your next meeting.
Will that be concurrent with the school board election?
It's school board runoff.
So it won't be with it?
No, it will not be. We couldn't get it in time. We would've had to, for school board, we would've had to have met at a special meeting on January 2nd to have done that.
Missed the bug.
Any other comments or questions? Now here, item six, our city manager.
Yeah.
Ms. Russ.
With the vacancy in the water and sewer superintendent position, we held interviews, and I think that there'll probably be an article in the paper, maybe tomorrow, publicly announcing this. But Steve Ruddy, who is, was already employed by the City of Perry, has been promoted to the Water and Sewer Superintendent. He's been with the City of Perry since 2010, and has been responsible for the water plant and sewer plant and other administrative duties within the department. In addition, Vernon Robbins, who's been with the city for many, many years, is the, has been designated as the Assistant Superintendent. And between the two of them, I believe that the department is in good hands, both for the plants and for the distribution and collection system. And so they have a great deal of experience and knowledge about the Perry system, and I think they'll work well together, and they'll be a valuable asset to the community. Both are public service oriented and customer service oriented, and so I look forward to being in these positions. We've had several calls about Century Park, what's going on there. And so it's kind of nice to hear people, when they see things that they kind of wonder about, to call in. Thanks to the Exchange Bank, Century Park's getting facelift, all-new playground equipment, and other site improvements will be occurring there over the next week to a couple of weeks. I think they'll probably try to, with the weather getting a little bit nicer, you know, hopefully they'll speed up their installation process. But looking forward to having that new equipment at that location. I think it'll be really nice. Today, several of us met with Professional Development Group, which is the consulting firm who's working with us on the sports complex. They had a kickoff meeting, and so went through several issues and developed an action plan of kind of what needs to happen for second, third. We didn't get to item four yet, so we're gonna try to accomplish a couple of things and then get back together and work on that. So had a good productive discussion. Thirty-five electric customers signed up for our $25 rebate program, and made the community, they made the community a little bit brighter for the Christmas holidays. The rebate will actually, they'll see that on their bill that they get around the 1st of February, so that rebate will help offset some of the, some of the expense. And so we appreciate those who participated. I think the one that won was the, that it was tied in with the radio. Yeah. I can't remember who won.
Oh, Rod McCall.
Yes, Rod McCall, yes. Of course, that's through the bank, so they do the judging, you know, and all of that through the bank. With our snow yesterday, I, you know, I'm always amazed that when I, you know, come to town, the snow's been bladed, and, you know, it's just a good thing to know that people are out there taking care of us when we, when we have those snowfalls. And then this morning, all those big piles that were downtown got loaded up in the dump truck and hauled away. So we have some warmer weather tomorrow, hopefully a lot of it will be totally gone. And just as a reminder, the next regular meeting would have, of the council, would have fallen on January 20th, which is MLK Day. And so in observance, the city does observe that as a holiday. And so our next council meeting and PMA meeting will be Thursday, January 23rd. And that's my report.
Thank you. Questions, Mary?
Is Steve gonna still take care of the water plant, or you're not gonna place, place him there?
We'll probably do a little bit of delegating, or he will. But he feels like he can, I think between Steve and Vernon, I think they feel like they have it covered. We'll address their staffing needs, you know, as, as we get into it a little bit further, but for the time being.
It's a good deal.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mary. Item seven, we received recommendations from the Perry Planning Commission regarding application filed by Harry Hughes on behalf of his LC Stacy Hillis. Mr. Payne, you wish to present that to the board?
I can. We held a public hearing and talked to Mr. Hillis. He came prepared with appropriate drawings, and really the only concern was the screening that is required for that type of a use. And his drawings already had that shown on there. He plans to put fence, a screening fence on the west side of the building. So everything seemed to be in order. It was recommended to pass on to the council for your approval. Everything looks good to the planning commission. No questions?
Councilmember, this is in your, in your packet. If you have time to review it, or wish to take time to review it, and ask any questions concerning the property. I'll read the item seven. Thank you, David. Received recommendation, Perry Planning Commission regarding application filed by Harry Hughes on behalf of his LC Stacy Hillis, collectively the applicant, for the use and by review of a current C2 general zoning district and site plan to permit the location operation of a portable restroom rental company at 401 15th Street, Perry, Oklahoma, 7307. Hereafter the property. Do you have any recommendations concerning this zoning request for this item?
This is the same property that was just brought up not too long ago?
Right.
Same zoning as appropriate?
Yeah, the same, it's the same zoning, it's just a different use. Use by review.
So that company's already gone?
Quokkem was the tenant there.
The only concern I have, in the last time we did this for Quokkem, there was a requirement for them to put up a fence, and they never did. And now then, this gentleman has put up a fence, but it's a chain link fence. So someone used to hold some of his feet to the fire on this deal, because we dropped the ball on the last, the last tent that was in there. I don't know if he would be required, or if Harry was gonna be required. But someone was required to put up a fence, and we never held him to it.
I wish the applicant was here tonight so that we could ask him.
Well, I mean.
Either the applicant or.
Someone agreed, you know, either Harry or this gentleman agreed to it.
Right, they did.
So as far as I'm concerned, if they don't put up a fence, we pull it from them.
I've driven by there, too, Bill, and you can see the portable body.
Yeah, he put up a chain link fence this weekend in there. But that's not an opaque fence.
We're thinking that might've been a temporary fence.
Well, that's fine.
For security purposes.
I just want, I want Jason or someone to stay on this guy.
We will.
If you look at it, it's not a permanent fence that's up there right now.
Well, you never know, you never know what their intentions are. I mean, the last, the last person was supposed to put up a fence, and they didn't, so.
They ain't put anything up.
That's a good point.
On item seven, we're really not taking action. Received recommendations from the planning commission. Item eight, we will either accept or reject this. So item eight, is that right, Brad?
That's correct.
Consider approval of ordinance number two, 2014-1 permitting through for a use-by-review process to location and operation of a portable restroom rental company in a C2 general commercial district at 401 15th Street, Perry, Oklahoma, 7307. And located on a tract of land situated in the east half of the northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter. I don't want to lose myself. Section 21, township 21, north range, 21 north range, 1 west, Indian Meridian, Noble County, State of Oklahoma. Savings severability and repealer and declaring an emergency. What did you hear?
Move to approve the ordinance. Second.
Comment? Questions? Vote please, Dixie.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
I have a question. If it just provides that the emergency doesn't fail, or if it were to fail, what does that mean?
It means that the use by review is, is not approved until 30 days after the publication of the ordinance.
So that would give them time to put up a fence.
He's already using it.
Yeah, they're already, so. The other, the consequences of not passing an emergency, okay, are that when you publish the ordinance, if you haven't passed the emergency, you have to do it in full. So, you know, sometimes those 20-page ordinances, you want to pass the emergency. Otherwise, you have to pay for a 20-page publication in the newspaper. That's the one reason. There'll probably be a front-page article on not passing an emergency. But the, the, the second thing is if you, if you pass the emergency, it's not subject to referendum. Referendum is the ability of the public to step forward and be able to have an election to repeal your ordinance, okay? The third thing is it makes it effective immediately upon publication.
So this is a really old question by now. This company has moved in there, already using it as it's stated. If they don't do what they say with putting up the fence, what can we really do?
We will cite them for a violation of the.
Can you pull their certificate of occupancy?
Well, I mean, they will get, they will get a $299 ticket, and each day is a separate violation. I mean, you know, when you prosecute in criminal court, it doesn't take very many citations.
So our process, though, how long does it take for us to even get to that point? Because they only have to wait 15 times.
Well, I think, I think Jason, you know, if you pass this with an emergency, I would say that it needs to be up within 10 days to two weeks. I mean, it's how quickly you get a fence contractor out there to, to, to do this.
He was asked that same question at the planning commission meeting, and his response was, well, his response to the question, where were you gonna put up the fence? His response was, as soon as it gets passed.
Who was he, the tenant or?
Mr. Hillis, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Hillis.
Mr. Hillis. It just find it irritating that we have somebody moving in before we change this policy, and this isn't the first time that we've been here.
No safeguards.
I mean, it's just.
That's, that's not quite true. We do have safeguards. It's just that sometimes you don't know they're actually operating a functioning of business until they're already operating functions of business.
Well, and I, I understand that. I'm not looking at that.
I want to ask any property owners that may have commercial properties, if you intend to lease your properties to someone that you think may need to change the zoning, you might call our permitting office and call our city manager, so we can say, keep that status of violation in trouble. You might want to seek your, your rezoning now, or we have an option to shut them down and not let them operate until they have the proper zoning. We have that authority.
I may be wrong, this may be a question for David, but that was zoned correctly already. So other than just a, a use by review, you know, it, I don't know that they were required to do that, were they? Being that it was already zoned adequate?
It's not, the portable restroom company is not one of the, one of the permitted uses in the list of 50 or 60 uses in the general commercial district. So, and it was really an abundance of caution, because at the last, at the last time, the use by review was to permit a contractor's yard, which is kind of what this is, and a warehousing use, okay, which was required by use by review. But this business is not one of the ones listed on permitted uses. And, but it was similar to one that was listed as permitted uses. For that, you have to do a use by review, if it's not listed, but it's similar. And, and that does give a, that does give a check, you know, in case we didn't want that there. Why that fence wasn't done, did, did the person move out shortly? They apparently weren't there.
They were there six months or something.
Then, then, then that's an oversight on our, on our part. They should've been, you know, we should've, we should've forced the hand on that.
I'm guessing right, we were kind of in between employment and C2 as well.
We would've been about that time.
We ready for the question?
I just, I encourage us to stay up on that kind of thing, because for one reason, it's hard for us to enforce on this person, and then they say, well, what about the last guy? You didn't make him do it. So we gotta have a standard to go by and.
I agree, Bill. Vote, Dixie.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
No.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote no. It is my motion. Item nine. Consider approval of real estate contract with Handale Reddy McCentral. And the news on this is that we're gonna continue it?
They have not returned a signed contract, and until, until we have a contract in hand from them, I don't think it's appropriate for the city council to take action on it. So we always like the other party to sign first, and then we'll bring it to the city council. But it looks like it's a, you know, it's a go. This is for the last five acres that was sold in the industrial park. This is the five acres immediately to the west of that. So, so you're basically, and it's a similar contract, the amount is similar, and so, you know, I, I don't anticipate any problems or anything like that. It was just, you know, we were, you know, we were hoping that we could get everything all signed and sealed before tonight's council meeting. So we put this on the agenda into an anticipation that we would, didn't get to that point, so we'll bring this back at the appropriate time.
They expressed a couple of issues. I made amendments to the agreement on Friday, and we sent it to them, whether it was the holiday or whatever, they just, they didn't get it reviewed. So we tried to make it so that it would be possibly approved, but we don't see it as a problem, at least at this point. But until it's signed, it's not sued, so.
We're gonna move on to item 10. Consider lump sum, approval of lump sum payment on the OMRF pension for Henry Nada. Consider lump sum, approval of lump sum payment on the O M R F pension for Henry Nada. We just said Henry as Hank has requested his pension contributions in lump sum amount. He has the option to do that, he's asking us to approve it because we are the retirement board for the city also. So if you deem it appropriate, he's requesting it, so it's.
Do we have to pay that out, or does that come from a retirement fund he's, he's got?
It comes from.
From a fund.
His fund.
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve the second payment.
Vote Dixie.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
I love new business, any new business before it's processed with the council. Seeing none, item twelve.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second, second.
Vote Dixie.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Warner. Yes.